Nighttime you gotta watch out for deer. Another guy said, "Yeah, you gotta look out for stolen cars once in a while." And so it was used. It was maintained also at one time. You know, when it was the dump that they had to plow in order for people to get there. Is it done so now? No. We're not asking it to be done either. We just want to get some access up to that property. And I believe there is some state law precedents that, you know, when someone's been using land to get to for fifty, sixty years, you cannot stop them now from getting to their property.
Well, you have, uh, it gives you a case before a judge is really what it does. It doesn't, it doesn't just automatically give you the land. Let's say you're mowing your neighbor's property for fifty years. Doesn't automatically make that your land because you've been maintaining it. It just gives you a case before a judge.
Mm-hmm. We'd love to get in front of a judge and avoid the lawyers.
Yeah.
Might have a little more sense of common sense and something. That's all I have at this point. And I'm sorry for keeping the scouts here so late.
One close-up time will still be the last device. Even the lawyer said the word agreement, and I agree with that. Um, I, I believe there are so many issues here. And so, and all the parties that are involved in this, all the parties involved, should get together and sit down. That would be the town, Holliston Sand and Gravel, the Equestrian Center, all the people that are opposed, landowners that are opposed to closure of the road, and sit down and talk about this. Because legally, et cetera, the town would get involved for years and years. We would get involved for years and years. And it would probably hinder Holliston Sand and Gravel, et cetera, from what they are doing. So I think it would be advantageous for all of us to sit down. If it has to be a one or two representative of you, I know how busy you are and what it involves there. We should all sit down and discuss the situation and see if there is some kind of boundaries. It can be, you know, that is, in my opinion, paper road, whatever, it's a right-of-way to our property. I don't, I don't care how you want to turn it. That was a right-of-way to seventy-five acres of my father's. So I think if, without the legal actions taking place, if we could sit down and discuss this with them, we could all probably come to a resolution of this problem. And I would hope this could happen. We've asked for it before, and the other parties involved, not the people in this room, have objected to it. So I think if maybe the town suggested it to them, and everybody could be on the same page, we'd get the problem resolved. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have two questions. I'm sorry, Julia, is it Mayhoo?
Mayhoo.
Mayhoo, and Mr. Beta. To either one of them, two points that you brought up this evening was the EPA's concern of access to the property. Do you acknowledge, does EPA have access to property to check the sites that they drill to see if any migration of the contaminants are moved? Can EPA walk in here?
They, they have it on the Superfund site. They also have dropped sites on my father's property. And as of two years ago, they were going up twice a year and checking it. I don't believe in the last two years they've had access to it. I know anytime my father's trying to get access to his property, he's been told it'd be fifteen hundred dollars a week or by Holliston Sand and Gravel for anybody to get through their roads to my father's property.
So, I just want to clarify. So from the past year, are you saying the EPA is having heated access to that property or yet actually?
No, they haven't. They haven't been able to get into it.
They can't get in. Then the second question comes. You provided us with a commercial property detail. Mr. Beta, you said approximately somewhere dated 2008, the, the...
Multiple listing.
Yes. It states in here, 1.75 million yards of gravel sold at a dollar. So it's not a mining operation. It's not a farming operation. It's being touted as a mining operation. The other piece here is over 3,000 square foot of frontage. On what road? 3,000 square foot, uh, excuse me, 3,000 feet of frontage.
Right, I caught that.
Where's the road?
Part would be Tiff, and the other part would be Old Tiff.
A lot of moving pots here.
Also, within the last ninety days, thirteen and a half acres have been clear-cut and stumps removed at the very, very top of the hill. Nowhere near the horses. What's gonna be done there? I don't know. But then if you read between the lines, you can see what's gonna happen. I can show you on the maps there if you like where that parcel is. It is right at the intersection of Old Oxford, Old Tiff, and the entrance to Holliston's property.
Mr. President, if I may ask you to come up for just one second to show me. He can show me here, or you can show it to anybody else on the big map. I need to look at it. I'll never answer. So this is the Google map, Earthview, right? The Equestrian Center, Holliston Sand.
Yes.
Tiff Road, Old Forge Road.
See where your cursor is right now?
Yes.
That whole area right there, that's thirteen acres. Every one of these trees from here is gone.
That's kind of a sidebar, right? Can we turn on the big map so other people can see?
Okay. Now that I know where it is...
Counsel? Yeah.
Here. Thank you. Our property is right here. This is where the solar farm was put in.
Yeah.
This is the sand quarry now, the hole behind the barn.
Right.
This whole square right here, every tree is gone now.
Okay. So we're talking about thirteen acres in this square of trees removed. And so this whole area, which on my map, if you look, about Tiff Road, this right here, this triangle area. So everyone else can see what I'm looking at? Cut this, this is Tiff Road here, and this area is being cleared. That's a problem. May I go?
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lynn Spinella, the owner of Brookside Equestrian Center. And unfortunately, you've only heard one side of the story this evening. Um, I brought my own map, which I hope is very clear. The purple is our property, our farm. The orange is the King property. The green is the Stone property. And I think you can clearly see that the Stone property is landlocked. This is Tiff Road. This is Old Oxford Road. And this is Trumper Cove. Now, at no point has there ever been an easement or right-of-way granted to the Stone family to cut across my property to get to theirs. Never. The King property was always accessed via Old Oxford Road. And in 2008 or '09, when Holliston Sand went to court and took possession of Old Oxford Road by adverse possessions, every one of the abutters was notified. I understand that Mr. King didn't respond to the notification. So it went through without his protest. Now he's landlocked. So now, all of a sudden, this becomes my problem because they can't get to their land. So how is that fair to me? And for all the years that Mr. Picard owned this property, this horse farm, the Stones would come once a year and walk their property. And they would use this little gravel dirt road around the paddocks up there, which had a chain and a lock on it. And they would come and ask Leo permission to come in and cross the property so they could walk their property home. And after they left, that chain would go back up and it would be locked again. There was never free access to that property through my property, ever. And so the reason why Tiff Road was gated and boulders put up there was because we had a tremendous problem with dumping. And kids going up there on four-wheelers and ATVs and opening up all my paddock gates and letting the horses out and driving through the paddocks and chasing them with their ATVs. But luckily someone didn't get killed. So we came to the town. And we got permission from Linda Tebow, who at the time was the town administrator, to block that road for that purpose. The dumping and the kids on the ATVs and the dirt bikes, which was a tremendously dangerous situation. As far as the dump is concerned, in 1976, that dump was closed. There was never another reason to go up Old Tiff Road. There's nothing up there except woods.
That's right.
And so, and it belongs to other people. It doesn't belong to the town. It's privately owned property. So at what point do you say it's okay to trespass? And that's exactly what's happening here. And not once, not once did I get a request from the Stone family to purchase an easement or a right-of-way. It was always, well, I always did it, so I'm gonna do it now. It doesn't work that way.
Excuse me?
And this was, and this was always the situation. And Mr. Picard's daughter is still around.
She is.
And yes, and I've got a letter from her saying that it was always locked, that gate was always locked, and there was never free access through that property, ever.
Alfred King or the...
We're not talking about Alfred King. We're talking about Leo Picard and now MCS Enterprises. So, I mean, I, this has been done, this has been filed. And I do believe that this is a civil matter. And I don't believe that the town council has the authority to grant a right-of-way. But, I mean, if you wanna open Tiff Road, go for it. Open, but I would, believe me, I would call you every time that there's an old refrigerator or an abandoned car or somebody's aluminum siding or, or... You can't even believe what was up there. And then we also have the problem with the neighborhood kids on their ATVs and their dirt bikes. And as far as the excavation is concerned, we did that all legally. That was all done with permission from the towns. And twenty-five of those acres have already been reclaimed and planted. And we're working on the other. And I can't help it if it takes that long. It just takes that long. I don't have any control over how long it takes. But it, again, you're only getting one side of the story. There is definitely another side of the story.
Can I ask you a question? How can you open Tiff Road and then telling them, "Okay, go ahead and open it up, this is an old refrigerator, it's just gonna be caused there again," when the road itself has been excavated?
It hasn't been excavated.
I have pictures right up there for the town.
It has been excavated. I didn't walk that road. That road is gone. I've walked that road. That road is not...
The road is, the only road there is it's accessible by the big trucks that take the sand over and out.
That's not true.
They have pictures of it up there. It's number two, I believe, or whatever. It's not shown on your map, but it's on Google Map as of today.
So Google Map is the authority?
Well, Google Map is today. It's not something drawn with a key.
You can't see the road on Google Map.
Yes, you can. It's right there.
No, you can't. But that's besides the point. My point is that this is still happening. It needs to be determined in court. I mean, this, I'm not sure that this town council is the proper venue for this type of discussion.
Hi. Ms. Spinella, before you step down, I just have one question.
I'm sorry?
On your map, what part of Old Tiff Road do you own?
From my driveway, which is right about here, up to Old Oxford Road.
Your driveway is what people are calling, now, I'm asking this. It's not that I know the answer and I'm asking it that way. I'm honestly asking you. Your driveway is what people are calling Old Tiff Road?
No. No. My driveway runs off of Old Tiff Road.
Okay, so...
Shortly after the Stone Bridge.
Where the blockade is, is on Old Tiff Road, which is...
It's just beyond my driveway. The entrance to the farm, right beyond the entrance to the farm.
Okay, but if that is Old Tiff Road, and Old Tiff Road were to go through that, that's not your property?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, if they can't use Old Tiff Road without somehow getting past your blockade, then your blockade wouldn't be on your property, correct?
We got permission to block that road.
No, I know that.
When I'm holding at my property, somebody else's property, we got permission to block that road from the town.
I'm not arguing that point. I'm asking that your property runs along Old Tiff Road?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And for them to get to their property, they would have to follow Old Tiff Road?
They can't get to their property using Old Tiff Road. They have to cut across my property to get there. There is no right-of-way or easement. They have, they have to cross my property to get there.
Okay. Can, just, I'm just trying to get a really, really good sense. Can you show me where your property is?
Where my property is?
No, I know where yours is. I can see it on the map. Can you come again and show me where your property is?
Yes, but Ms. Spinella is partially correct on that. We go up Old Tiff and then go to Old Oxford and come in through the King's property, which is on our means that we have permission to access. So what she presented is far...
But Old Oxford is owned by Holliston now. It's, it's not public property.
I dispute that.
So Old Forge here, so you would have to follow, and this is, this is Spinella's property, right?
Yes, all the way, all the way here.
Okay, so you have to follow that and then down into this area, whatever this like clearing is.
All through here from Mr. King's, yeah.
Okay. The problem is, if we were to make any motions to open what Ms. Spinella had the given right by the town to do, it doesn't solve your problem because of the court case that Mr. Leo Ciev mentioned an hour ago, if you can't use Old Oxford Road.
How can they have access to a road that nobody owns? I don't understand how Holliston Sand and Gravel, they own the road. Spinella can own the road when the town can sit there and say, "Nobody owns that property."
No, what I'm saying is that the court case says now, because that court case is finalized, and it's not about Old Tiff Road, it's about Old Oxford Road, that that can't be used. That's not a public area. That's theirs. That's Holliston's.
That wasn't exactly how it got read. He skirted around. That, that, that whole court case came about because National Grid did not have access to the power lines by Holliston Sand and Gravel. They wouldn't give them access. So that's how that whole lawsuit came about, is National, when they put all those big towers in that they put all through the state, they couldn't get access to that property. They came to my father, and my father said, "Yes, I'll grant you access." You know, it's key butts there, that problem where the power lines are. Holliston Sand and Gravel wouldn't let them access. Same kind of response my father got. They would get charged X amount of dollars a week. So Holliston Sand and Gravel took them to court and some way got that turned around. And so, but, but when they got it turned around, lo and behold, the electric company was allowed to go on those power lines. So they were allowed to access the road to Holliston Sand and Gravel. So how it happened is like about how all this happened.
Getting back to Old Oxford Road there, you have in your possession a letter from Mr. Balageron, the owner of Holliston Sand and Gravel, giving us permission several times, according to his letter, which is signed by him, to access our property from Old Oxford Road from Pound Hill. It's written, you have it right in front of you.
But the road's blocked.
That's correct. The road is blocked, but he gave us permission to get there.
I also got a letter, was it, was from Michael Johnson, Wednesday, March 26, 2014. Mr. Laurie Strangler of National Grid, plot seven, lot 106. Says, "Hi, Laurie, I'm wondering if it would be possible for National Grid to put a chain across the access area to the power lines at the road's edge? This is at the intersection of Old Oxford Road and Pound Hill Road. North Smithfield, plot seven, 106, owned by National Grid. We have dumping going on the area, and there was a chain off, and it would, and this would hinder dumpsters. This is an abandoned road that is blocked off with boulders just on the other side of the National Grid property. Thank you, Michael Johnson, building and zoning inspection." So, again, it's, you're talking about access and things that... Yes, okay. First, the individual way in the back first?
Yes. I've been on Tiff Road for thirty years. I don't know.
Please, please state your name.
I've been through Ken Yankee. Linda Tebow.
Please state your name for the name and address for the record, please.
Company Benoit Seventy-Two Road. I went to the meeting when this whole thing started, the landscaping, which by the way was a five-year deal, so that they could see their horses and that. Five-year deal, town council didn't keep up with that, building inspector didn't keep up with that. Now it's Sand and Gravel. Been to the town for the tax void because my gutters have fallen full sand. They blast, my house shakes, and it's ridiculous. When John Doris lived up there, I've been to that house. The town plowed up to the road, and it was an unmaintained town road. He had plowed, and he plowed down. And Nikki Hill at the time was a wonderful nice guy. On occasion, bad snowstorm, he would plow it. So I mean, the town, this has been going on for a long time, seventeen years. And as far as her dirt, the trash, now they're dumping couches. You can ask the highway department, couches, paint cans, bicycles, and everything on Church Street going to St. John's. So are we gonna block that off and people can just go up Church Street and not go the other part? Because I walk that now every day, and there's always trash there. So check with the town bar because they're picking up trash there. As far as people getting hurt on ATVs and everything, they closed the road so the ATVs couldn't go through. But yet on Sundays, her son would have them come in by truckloads, and all their people could ride the sand pit. So I mean, there's a lot going on here. The town council, I know it wasn't you guys, but the town has slapped on this. The building inspector has slapped on this. I don't think Mr. Benoit opened his eyes once, or maybe he was getting something on the side. This is like ridiculous that we're going through this. With the unmaintained town road, it's on the map. And when Nikki Hill put up the blue gate at the bottom of her driveway, I was there that day, and he said, "Sorry, I was told to do this by Mrs. Spinella." But Linda Tebow stood on my front doorstep, saying, "I know it's wrong. It's a town road. We're gonna see what we can do." But everyone's gonna see what they can do on its election year. Mrs. Hamilton did the same thing when she was campaigning for flowers. We're looking into it. There was a cease and desist. We know it's wrong. They were supposed to be growing hay up there. There was no hay ever grown up there. They didn't even get their hay from freaking leeways. They trucked it in from Canada. Truck that stuck the, truck that stuck on the bridge. So you can listen to who you wanna listen to, but I mean, people in the town are getting sick of it.
Is anyone, is anyone else who hasn't spoken as of yet? Can I have a minute? Yes, okay. Can I have a minute? Yes, can I have a minute?
Sheriff Beta, I just wanted to, again, reiterate that when my father got a letter from the Spinellas asking to meet with them, they offered my father, I'm ashamed to say what they offered, because it was nothing. And when we said no, that's when the gate went up. And at the time, I went to the fire chief, and the fire chief said, "That can't be done. We need access up there." So he went to her place, and I say her place, business, horse farm, which it's not, and was told he would be given a key. He said to me, "She never gave me a key." So at the time, Nick was still alive, and he said, "You can come onto my property if there's a fire or an incident up there." Because that was before any boulders. But at the same time, this is when Spinella wanted to do her little landscaping, that her horses were in danger of ice. And this little landscape, as like Steve testified, and you've got the paper there, was said two to four years. Well, she's given a variance, and at all these zoning meetings, she'd been given like three variances, which is sometimes unheard of. And they keep doing these exceptions for her. And they keep saying, "We'll follow it up." But they never followed up. She doesn't live in the town of North Smithfield. She goes under the Farming Act. She used an example in South County. But a lot of other lawyers, including ours, have looked at that and said, "It's not even, it's not even the same. Can't even compare it." But her own agenda, as she was going for her paralegal, decided that, "I know I can get around it that way." And when we, and she says, "Once a year," and "Thank you very much," that's a lie. I go up to the property, I was going up to the property, walking and driving up to the property once a week, maybe more. But I have never, ever not been up there at least less than a month's time. So I have watched day to day for eighteen years what's going on up there. And I can tell you that that's why we spent two years at zoning boards, because we were trying to get things done in the way that they were given on the variance of the zoning, waiting with every administration to see that you were gonna go and check out what they were doing. And even Bob Benoit, when he tried to do a cease and desist, he was fine with it. And then she presented, again, another case from some Judge Vogel, had nothing to do with her property, but stating that she wasn't gonna be using any of this, doing this for any monetary reason. It was solely for the farm. And when Bob Benoit, and you can look it up there, and it's on any of those papers, he did the cease and desist because it was, the town council said, "Is it a farm?" And that's why it went back, because at the time, she had a real estate broker come in. She had a vet that she used for her horses when she had fifty-one horses, saying, testifying that, "Oh, yes, this could be dangerous for the horses. So therefore, it is a farm, and we must do this landscaping." Well, at that time, when she used the example of that Judge Vogel, well, if she's doing this for the horses, using the example of South County, not her farm, it said that it was for the farm. It becomes a farm if she's doing it for the farm, so long as she doesn't do monetary out of it. Well, that's why the cease and desist was changed again and let it go through as a landscaping job that would, in that paper, say, take two to four years. As my husband said, seventeen years. That's quite a difference between two and four. And have her come up here, and she can lie and say, "I do, I come up there once, once a year, twice a year." And then when she tried to have us arrested because we were standing on the road that we have always grown up on, in my case, for sixty-six years, and never got arrested, and the police came, and she said, "They're on my property. The town gave me, the town gave me this road." The police asked her for the papers. I won't say how many flawless words she said to them, but she said, "I don't have to show you any papers." So I guess my question to you is, yes, her driveway is on the left, but then her gate that never opened up, never opened up for anybody. And then when she saw that we were still going over the gate because it's just a, she wanted it all to grow in so it wouldn't look like a road, and it's still open now. You could physically, if that gate and the boulder wasn't there, you could still drive a car like you always did up on that road. a car, like you always did, up on that road. When she saw that we were just walking around the gate, less than a week later, she had boulders put down. Why would she decide to block that road? It isn't for ATVs, as you've heard before. We have testimony from other people, friends of hers, that said, "They drive their ATVs up there with her permission, and her son, all the time." And then, the horse trails, the horse trails that she used, they were on King's property, and they were on our property. She didn't mind riding her horses over on our property. But to get back to the farm, like I said, she doesn't live in town. She doesn't pay taxes as she should. The material that she's taken off, she has not put back. This, this farming, this variance that the zoning and the town council should be aware of, is something that you have to go look at. You don't have to take my side of the story, you certainly don't have to take her side of the story. You've got to go up and see for yourself, because people have tried to go up there, and she's kicked them off. The zoning tried to go up there, and she said, "I don't have to have anybody on my property. She's the queen up there in her area, in her domain." So, it's like, it's your job to police what you call government variances. Is she a farm? She turns around when she wanted her solar. She wouldn't come to any of those zoning. That's why we went to all the zoning meetings. She never came once, because you know what she did? I don't have to go, because I leased that property to this company out in Virginia, and now, they're, 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 whatever you call them, that are all over the place, and get gated around, they're abutting our property. And all of this, and the variances and whatnot, none of the neighbors will be able to see this. I guess we're not neighbors, because she decided she was going to take over our land. I guess my question again is, did you, the town of North Smithfield, give her the road? Because she's, that's what she's claiming now. She's saying, "That's my road. They're trespassing on my road to get to the property." The road that I walked on for 66 years, the road that my father walked on for 70-something years, 80 years, the road that my grandfather and my great-grandfather, my great-grandfather was one of the builders of that road, but I guess that's hers. So, I need these answers, but most, what I mostly want is justice of the law, of the variances, or this town to police what they've given an outsider. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak at this time?
I would like to know how they got eminent domain on the road, the way Ms. Spinella referred to, on a road that nobody owned, in a road that was locked off, and if he's claiming eminent domain, we had no access to our property. So, that whole eminent domain does not hold any water in my law. So, how does, all of a sudden, they have ownership of the road? I, how, how, the lawyer, how?
I, I don't know. I'm in the conversation with the road.
She referred to owning the road any times, her and, her and Hollis and Stanley Gravel.
You asked a question. The only I can tell you is, if Old Oxford Road is the road that's described to this lawsuit, PC 061502, that's owned by Hollis, that's now owned by Hollis and Stanley Gravel Company. So, if, it may be, just like you said, you'll get to the end of Tipped Road, and then you'll be to Old Oxford Road, and you won't be able to get out of the property.
Well, my father's property butts Old Oxford Road, so how did that happen? How did all of a sudden he get ownership?
Somebody went to, because they went to court, and they sued, and they won.
My father did not go to court on that.
I can't, I'm not, I'm not the lawyer for any party, but I'm, I'm pleading a court.
I know, I know, but it's, that's, in my, my, my ear, that's bogus.
And with all due respect, this is really up to the parties to go to court, to figure the court judgment out, whose rights were, were not. If you say this is a bogus judgment, go to court.
We would never notice by that, that a lawsuit even took place.
Well, I, I didn't know that, to be true. I got a court order. I'm just reporting to the council about a court order. I'm not saying it's valid or invalid. It can't be stamped by the security.
So, you're saying it's not valid or invalid, but you're, you're taking them to take that as...
Well, I'm telling them that there's a court order here. They're saying it's invalid. It's not for us to make that judgment. They want to go to court and say it's invalid, up to them, but this is a court order, and I don't know, I'm not disputing what they're saying about the history of the road. These are, these are not, it's not, it's, these are not issues that are of the same connection.
These are all legal issues that need to be addressed by the court.
But it does seem that if this is, if this is a valid judgment, I don't think getting access to Tipped Road is going to solve their problem.
If we have no knowledge of the lawsuit, and that's my father's name on it, I don't know how it can be valid.
Okay, um...
I'm just throwing that out there. That's a valid judgment.
Now, I'm going to give a little bit of advice, and then tell you what I will support if you come back, and I'm still sitting up here.
Oh, me either.
I have two little kids who cry every time I come. The first thing is go to court, find out about Old Tipped Road, because if, if I made a motion tonight to direct the solicitor to start looking into condemnation of Old Tipped Road, I'm not hearing it solves the problem. I'm not hearing that you can still get to your land. If we're going to do it, we have to do it 100%. You have to be able to get to your land without going through anybody else's land. And if you were to, two neighbors getting together and being amenable, I would still want to see an easement, so we're never here again, so the next council that comes in doesn't ever have to hear about this. So, first, get a lawyer, have them look at that suit, appeal it if you need to. At that point, if you can determine that you will have access to that road, that it will be public to all the abutters, and have that road, or at least we grant the easement on it, then I will make a motion to direct the solicitor to start looking into what we need to do to condemn Old Tipped Road and take it as a North Smithfield road. Okay?
Is, is the council going to look at the extraction of all...
That was my second part, going to ask Mr. President if he would, before doing the form of a motion, and ask Mr. President if he would entertain a letter to the zoning board to have them, the zoning board as they sit today, reopen the issue of if the variance is still viable, if its use is permitted, and granted.
Can we talk about this?
It's not on the agenda.
We're talking about blocking, we're not talking about the extraction.
Now, you should be, the thing is, the zoning board, zoning enforcement, it's not a zoning board map. The zoning board only hears petitions for variances and exceptions. They don't enforce that. So, the zoning, the zoning enforcement officer, they file a complaint, the zoning enforcement goes to the property, if they find one, they bring it to, to court. That's what you're going to go to court, doesn't it? You have zoning complaints. And they don't find one, and there we go, no complaints.
And another point of order, even if it's not on the agenda, if it's brought up by the public, we can still talk about it.
So, we have to have another meeting on that? Is that what we've been told?
No, because it was brought up by the public, we can discuss it.
I, I don't understand the question. The question is...
The question was a rebuttal to his point of order.
The zoning, the zoning, oh, all right. Make a motion to amend the agenda, to, to discuss it, you can discuss it, but you can't make a motion on it.
Okay, all right.
The council can discuss anything important by the public, by amending the agenda or discussing it, but you can't vote on it.
Right. I will make a motion to put onto the next agenda, if we're not too backed up, Madam Court.
Don't worry, we will be by then.
Just to simply discuss the activity at the Equestrian Farm, and subsequently contact...
If you want to talk about extraction of material, that's correct?
Right, talking, we will discuss the extraction of materials at the Equestrian Center.
Is it consistent with the zoning?
Right, and if it is still consistent, if it was at one time, if it's still consistent with the zoning variance that was helped move at the time, and the intent that was behind it.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second. Motion by Councilman Nadeau, second by Councilman Zelinski. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done, Madam Court, both courts, please.
Ms. Albs?
Yes.
Ms. Nadeau?
Yes.
Mr. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Mr. Bada?
Mr. Zelinski?
Yes.
Our next meeting is March 21st.